I call to order the President and Board of Trustees to order, roll call please.
Mr. Pat-- Trustee Peck?
Here.
Trustee Rassage, Trustee Rippey, Trustee Bonucci?
Here.
Trustee Fay?
Here.
Trustee Lamb?
Here.
Mayor Collins?
Here. If we could rise with the pledge.
Presidential comments?
We have a couple. I'm going to turn over to the Chief and let him make the presentations of the Officer of the Year, or Civilian of the Year, and the Supervisor of the Year.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Village Board, and residents, and attendants, and staff, if I could get the three recipients up here, please. A couple weeks ago, we had our Department Awards for our civilian personnel, and also our sworn personnel, our yearly awards. At that time, we do give out commendations for a variety of calls that we respond to, different programs we have going on in the department, and different activities we are engaged in throughout the course of the year. Three of our top awards are the Personnel of the Year Awards, if you will. We have three of those awards, and tonight, I'd like to present those personnel to you. The first one is our Civilian of the Year. Paul Elzy, who's down at my far right down here. Paul is one of our custodians at the Police Department. He's been employed with us since September of 2011. And just some of the things that these awards, I should also mention, are voted on by these personnel's peers within their department. The command staff actually has no vote. We leave it up to the personnel, the sergeants, and the officers, and the other civilians that work with these folks to, first of all, make the nominations, but secondly, also to do the voting in the process as well, based on their interaction with their folks, and also with the activities they do throughout the year. So, getting back to Paul, some of the comments that the folks that nominated him for the Civilian of the Year, he's been viewed by his coworkers as one of the most dedicated and hardest-working employees at the Police Department. He always has a positive attitude, and has never heard complaining. The quality of work performed by Paul is always done well beyond anyone's expectations. He possesses a positive attitude all the time, and has always seen interacting with other personnel in a very favorable passion, fashion, I should say. Paul's work ethic and approach to his job makes him a very valued employee of the village. And again, those were comments presented by personnel that he worked side-by-side with. So, I'd first like to present Paul Elzy as our Civilian of the Year. The second award is our Officer of the Year. Although Adam is obviously aware that he's getting it, Adam was not able to be present at our award ceremony, so I'm actually going to be reading the plaque that he will be getting. Officer of the Year 2013, presented to Officer Adam Kaler, Star Badge 157. Adam Kaler was hired as a police officer with the Village of Plainfield on November 13, 2006. During his employment with the Village of Plainfield, Officer Kaler has worked in the Patrol Division as a patrol officer working the day shift platoon, as well as the night shift platoon. In 2010, Officer Kaler was selected as a traffic officer, and is currently assigned in that capacity. Officer Kaler also has several collateral responsibilities within the Police Department, some of which include evidence technician, juvenile officer, Illinois breath analysis operator, truck enforcement officer, and a police bike officer. During his career, Officer Kaler has received several Department Awards and letters of recognition for the level of work he has performed. Officer Kaler has been the Police Department's leading ticket writer for the past six years. Officer Kaler always exceeds a productivity expectation set forth by his immediate supervisor and/or the Police Department. In 2013, Officer Kaler led the Police Department in the total number of speeding citations and occupant restraint citations. Officer Kaler was also recognized by the Illinois Department of Transportation for his occupant restraint enforcement efforts during several statewide seatbelt campaigns. Although assigned as a traffic officer, Officer Kaler is always willing to assist patrol officers when the call volume is high, or the staffing levels are low, and does so without any complaint. Officer Kaler has an excellent working relationship with other members of the Police Department, and is viewed by his peers as a team player with a very positive attitude. Congratulations to Adam Kaler, 2013 Officer of the Year. And our last award is Supervisor of the Year. This year, it was presented to Colin Mullisack, Sergeant Colin Mullisack. Collins was hired as a police officer with the Village of Plainfield in July 2000. During his employment with the village, he served as a police officer-- I'm sorry. Sergeant Mullisack was selected as a school resource officer-- let me back up, back up. During his employment with the Village of Plainfield as a police officer, Sergeant Mullisack was selected as a school resource officer, and as a detective. Sergeant Mullisack also received the Plainfield Police Department Officer of the Year Award for his accomplishments in 2004. On October 3, 2011, Sergeant Mullisack was promoted to the rank of sergeant, and assigned to the night shift platoon as a patrol sergeant. Sergeant Mullisack also has several collateral responsibilities within the Police Department, some of which include evidence technician, juvenile officer, Illinois breath analysis operator, police bike officer, field training officer, field training sergeant, rapid deployment instructor, and is currently assigned as a member of the Joliet Police Department Special Operations Squad. Sergeant Mullisack single-handedly revamped the entire field training program, and created the manual we currently use for the training of new police officers within the department. Sergeant Mullisack has been described by his peers as a very knowledgeable officer, who possesses great leadership qualities needed for the position of sergeant. Again, congratulations to Sergeant Colin Mullisack, our 2013 Supervisor of the Year. And gentlemen, if you would like to go through the trustees?
Thank you, Mayor.
I've also been informed this evening that we have a presentation for TJ Countryman, and Mr. Persson's will make that presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. It's with great pride that I want to announce that TJ is a recent graduate of Roar University. TJ's been an employee of the village for over 15 years now. He's worked his way up to a crew leader within the Street Division. He heads up our Forestry Division, and that's been quite a challenge with the onset of the Emerald Ash Bore, and all the other responsibilities that come along with it, too, as well. Not only did TJ take on his full-time job here with the Village of Plainfield, but he also took the time and effort to go back to school, go back to Roar University, that was a school that he had selected, and this had taken him several years of night and weekend school to complete. So, I'm proud to announce, and I was proud to be at the graduation, too, as well. I think TJ was a little surprised to see me there, but I was proud of TJ that with his accomplishment here, he earned a bachelor's degree in business administration, and he actually earned it with high honors. So, TJ, I'm going to have you come forward here.
to the Village of Plainfield, and we voiced our concerns about the CN Railroad. And we had some trustees make comments, presentations, and such to him, and he seemed very receptive. And he said that within a month or so, we will reschedule to see if we're going forward or marching in place. So, I really want to thank him for taking his time out to come into the Village of Plainfield, and I certainly hope, and as I'm sure some of the trustees do, that we can get some questions answered, and maybe some changes in operation of the CN. The next I would like to say, Conservation Plainfield on Saturday held a river sweep. I think there was 40-some people present. Jonathan Prue was the organizer, did very well. I have to say that there was like 25 people with tie-dyed shirts that had "River Sweep" on the front of them, that they perched themselves, which I was quite impressed with. And also, Mr. Fay was there, and we went along-- Mr. Fay and I, and some others, went along 135th Street at the bridge, and picked up just oodles of three or four bags full of stuff. So, it was amazing. It's sort of sad to say that we could tell people which beverage people like to drink, and throw out of their cars. But we cleaned it all up, and it looks very nice now. The next thing I'd like to say is, yesterday, a number of people numbering 300 participated in the Big Serve, a local church behind Katie O'Conne's. It was also attended by trustees Bonucci, Lamb, and Rassage, and myself, and there was various duties. They went out to the stables and cleaned up the stables out there. A number of homes that were in need of some sprucing up, if you will, were taken care of. I also want to thank Allen for having his people volunteer or participate, whichever term you want to use. But also Pima and the Police Department. So, it was really, really grateful to see all these people show up. It really says a lot about the Village of Plainfield. We've been led to believe that there is churches that participated in a similar cleanup two weeks ago. And what the talk was yesterday is maybe we could get all the churches and all the volunteers together, and really spruce up the town. So, I just wanted to recognize those people. I was just amazed, just amazed at how people showed up yesterday and worked all day long. So, to those involved, thank you very much.
I'd like to add on to that a little bit. First of all, Mayor Collins has brought up the tie-dyed shirt a few times, so if the people out there have the tie-dyed shirts, I think he'd really like one. Just kidding, just kidding. No, the Big Serve was really a spectacular event. There were so many people out there. We were there doing registration with Bill Lamb and his wife, running around with Trustee Rassage, getting different things together. And I think the award of the day, though, really goes to Brian Murphy, who really got the ball rolling on this, and Trustee Rippey, who spent many times on the committee working things out with everyone. And especially for Trustee Rippey, because, and I know there's a joke in here somewhere, but he was actually at the stables shoveling manure all day long. So, I think for that alone, he deserves the high honors on that one. We were cooking, we were not doing that, so I want to make that clarification. And thank you to Officer Siegel and the Police Explorers, who actually did the cooking. They did a great job with that, with the assistance of the chief. So, it was a lot of fun. It really was a great day.
I neglected to recognize, too, our council was out there in his kayak, along with more-or-less-retired Trustee Dement, and Trustee Rippey. I'm sorry, when they weren't-- I didn't see them, and I think Mr. Rassage has a photo of them that was in the Herald News.
Very difficult to show, but we have in the red shirt, red vest, Mr. Harvey, which is Mr. Dement, who used to be a trustee at the village, and Trustee Rippey, in their kayaks going up and down the river. And what a great effort, and it was really great to be able to see that article in the paper. If I have a moment, Mayor Collins, I'd like to just interject a couple thoughts about the Big Serve. To add to what was already said, not only by yourself, but by other trustees, Margie Bonucci in particular, you have to give an awful lot of credit to our village administrator, Brian Murphy, but another person that collaborated, and he's not here this evening, but in a big way, was Pastor Ray Green from the Community Christian Church. I spoke with Pastor Ray yesterday, and they had an individual who was doing a video of the entire day and the day before. And I said, you know, what's-- is there an idea, what's a possibility we can do? We're going to have a board meeting on the first Monday in June, which is June the 2nd. They're going to put together a video summarizing the day, hopefully, showing just the activities, et cetera, a small thing, and they're going to make a presentation that particular evening. There will be no awards issued. It'll be a video of the program, pictures, who was involved, and just a highlight of the day. What he said would be-- Ray Green, Pastor Green said to me, he said, "Wouldn't it be great if we had a collaboration of 40,000 people from the Village of Plainfield?" And I said, "Well, I don't know if the police could cook that many hot dogs." But that hot dog squad, you know, I tested them for you guys, and they turned out pretty decent. But in the order of importance, you have to think about the individuals who were involved in this big sweep yesterday. We have the Police Department, our community service people, our Boy Scouts, seniors, juniors, church members, village department people. It really was a community effort, and I didn't see one sorrowful complaint the entire day. And you know what? And the day turned out beautiful, too. And so, if we could repeat this next year, it'll be a joy, and it was a joy to be able to be involved in it. Thank you.
Trustee comments?
Yes, no.
If there are no trustee comments, this will go on to the public comments on the agenda, not to exceed three to five minutes. Are there any public comments?
Yes, it'd be fine. If you could just state your name, please.
Is this on here? Okay. Yeah. Well, good evening. My name is David McCleve, and I am a homeowner in the Springbank subdivision. And I'm the individual that copied you folks on an email letter outlining a covenant violation within Springbank. I'm here tonight because a couple of you guys took the time to follow up with me, to say you wanted to look into the situation. Everyone on this board, some of the folks here in this room, certainly some folks outside of this room, all have a responsibility, and probably more importantly, the accountability, to make sure that the covenants and standards are upheld within Springbank subdivision, but just as importantly, for other Plainfield subdivisions. And that includes folks like, you know, myself, which is a homeowner. It includes the home builders. It includes the trustees. It includes the village staff, direct reports of the village staff. It includes folks like developers, like Ocean Atlantic, and property owners such as Avanti. If we see this one particular house in Springbank get a waiver through these covenants, then I think all of us here are looking at setting a very dangerous precedent, a precedent that undermines the true essence of the covenants and the covenant-controlled subdivisions that many of us live in. The other thing that it does, if we allow that waiver to happen, is it says that there's no accountability anymore. And probably just as important, we're all at risk of the quality and the standards of the new home construction that goes in. We bought into a standard. We bought into those covenants, the Springbank subdivision owners, and homeowners. And if you all remember, it was about three years ago, we had a situation come up out there, and all of you right here helped us navigate through that. We're asking that-- we're asking for help from you guys once again, that between this annexation agreement that you have with Avanti and Ocean Atlantic, that we ensure that these covenants are upheld and the standards enforced. We need to do this not only for the homes that are currently under construction, but the ones that may have blueprints sitting on desk right now, and certainly the ones that are going to come in in the future. One, we greatly appreciate the support that we get from the village, and we thank you for that. But now is the time to set the steps going forward, to get an accelerated solution to this current home, and get it in compliance before they take ownership, so that we can welcome these neighbors into our growing neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gergen, what is the process-- excuse me, what is the process of follow-up?
Well, obviously, before that home, the new owner takes possession, there'll be a certificate of occupancy. There's obviously a building permit has been issued. We're currently working with the actual association. I had a discussion with the head of Ocean Atlantic last week, to advise him that he's not in compliance with the annexation agreement. Unfortunately, they did forward an association approval letter to the actual building department. Based on that representation, the building permit was issued. So, I advised them that that's not consistent in terms of the annexation agreement as it relates to materials. So, prior to them getting a CO, we'll work with the building department to make sure we can resolve it, along with the current homeowners out there in Springbank.
Thank you.
For clarification, so the association approved, is that what you're saying?
That's correct. There was a letter tendered to the association. The association's representation, or representative of Ocean Atlantic, is that they're interpreting that fiber cement is the same thing as face brick, which is not staff's interpretation, or our understanding of the terms of the annexation agreement. And based on that fact, they did issue a letter approving this house, which is off fiber cement board.
So, we need to address this sooner than later? Because once it's built, I mean, it's--
Yeah. The house is actually up, and the fiber cement siding is actually on already as we speak. So, it's working with the actual owner of the property, or the builder, to try to rectify it, so it comes in compliance with the terms of the annexation agreement.
All right.
I would support staff enforcing our annexation agreement, and not granting an occupancy permit and allowing this to go through. Thank you.
Exactly.
You know, Mayor Collins, may I comment on something? Under normal circumstances, when the public makes a particular response to the Village Board in public comment, we as a group never respond to it, only through action. But, you know, this really strikes a very strong note, in my particular feeling, in that Springbank is a premier community in this community. It should have standards. The next thing, like I would say, why don't they throw up a double-wide trailer, and then all of a sudden, that becomes acceptable? Once you start destroying standards, you destroy the community. And this is very-- this is very critical for everyone on this board. We continue to say, we're going to meet standards that this community can be proud of. This may-- they may have a temporary victory on their part by putting something up, but it will, in my estimation, believe me, I think will demand it come down, or there be rectification where it meets the standards of your community. You have a beautiful place out there. People have spent a tremendous amount of their livelihood, their income, everything on that place, and I don't want to see it lost, because I wouldn't want to see my investment lost. And I feel equally strong for you as I do for myself. And we have, like I say, standards, and they will be met. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Hearing none, I will proceed with the business meeting. For the approval of the agenda, I'm seeking a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassage?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
Motion carries. Now, we're seeking approval to the consent agenda to include the minutes of the board meeting held May 5, 2014, and the minutes of the strategic planning meeting held on May 2, 2014, the bills paid, and bills payable, reports for May 19, 2014, approval of the ESRI annual maintenance contract, as identified in the staff report, approval of the Laserfish annual maintenance contract, as identified in the staff report. So, move?
Second.
Commissioner Peck, sorry, Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassage?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
I'd like to make a comment in regard to, in the consent agenda, the minutes of the strategic planning meeting on May the 2nd. If any of the public is even vaguely interested, we have copies of this, it'll be online. It shows what progress we had when we had our initial strategic planning session. We had goals. Well, we went through it for a four-hour period on May the 5th, and highlighted what goals have we achieved, which ones are still lacking, which need rewriting, et cetera. It's a very concise document, five or six pages. You can read it over and say, "Hey, where's the village going? Are you standing still, or are you moving forward? Are you just simply saying things and not doing anything?" That wasn't the case. It's specifically outlined, and if you have an opportunity, we have it, I believe it'll be online, and be able to read it. Go into the Village of Plainfield website, read what we have done for our strategic planning, because it's always being updated. Thank you.
Motion carried. The next item on the agenda is the row homes at Prairie Creek. We're seeking board consideration to direct the village attorney to a draft and ordinance rezoning the subject property to R4 zoning.
Well, yes, with regards to this development, perhaps before we proceed with the motion, to very briefly summarize this, the applicant's counsel is actually here this evening to basically provide a very brief review, but the applicant is requesting board approval this evening for a proposed special use for a planned development for 212 townhomes. As you recall, back in 2004, the Village Board did approve a PUD for the Prairie Creek development, which incorporated a portion of that property to be zoned commercial. That property is actually, as we speak, has been constructed, is currently zoned commercial to approximately 29 acres. It's being marketed for commercials. There's one existing commercial users bar tells on the northern perimeter. The applicant is seeking approval for-- to develop 212 townhome units on 64 acres. The village's comp plan does identify this as mixed use, and the applicant-- The village's comp plan does identify this as mixed use, and the applicant is proposing a review and approval. Obviously, the property, as we speak, is currently zoned I-1, so it would require a rezoning to R4 as it relates to this proposed development. And I believe the applicant's counsel is here this evening to answer any questions that the board may have.
If you could just state your name, please.
My name is Len Munson with the law firm of Coon Heap &amp; Munson, 552 South Washington in Naperville. And as Mike indicated, my client, Ryan Holmes, builder, nationally-recognized builder, and also a frequent contributor to Plainfield already with several great developments in the area, is proposing a townhome development of approximately, of 212 units. And as Mike noted, the entire area, as you can see outlined here, is a total of 63 acres. The southern portion of this property is predominantly low ground, will be on the north portion and utilizing approximately 29 of the 63 acres for the townhomes. As the staff memo has indicated, the river and the open space are great amenities for residential development in this area. And also, as Michael pointed out, that the original PUD in 2004 identified townhomes for this subject property. Through, we gave a presentation case on this, oh, November of last year, I believe? It was a while ago, to Plainfield. Since then, there's been extensive work done with cities, with the village staff, and the plan has been changed considerably. We've added, as requested by the city staff, we've added, widened streets, we've added eyebrows and landscaping definitions, some extra open space, and I think, as Mike can indicate, we've been extremely cooperative and responsive to what the village requests. It's also interesting to note that the overall development here is requiring, is calling for a density of 3.3 units per acre, which is a very light use of the property. And once again, we're looking forward to be good residents, and we'd like to, you know, join you in the Village of Plainfield, available for any questions you may have.
One question I have is, one of the stipulations that's been proposed is incorporation of 360-degree window fenestration and incorporation of a belt band on the rear and side elevations. That's a recommendation, is that something you're agreeing to?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. I think it's very important, because it's...
We agree, we want to have, we want to have an attractive development, just as you do.
The other issue, which has been a major factor in the public discussion around this, is around the engineering. Is that final engineering completed or not?
It has not yet been completed.
I'm sorry?
It's not yet been completed or submitted to us. There has been some preliminary engineering, and primarily the focus was on the floodplain elevations on the site. And in fact, a lot of the infrastructure, not at this particular site, but to it, has been built through that commercial property out in front, water mains, sanitary sewers have been stubbed, and the detention ponds have been built for this residential portion.
I would, I would suggest that before we proceed on any decision in this piece of property, that we get the final engineering. If we are not sure what floodplain, the maps show floodplain in that vicinity, I don't think we should be approving it.
If I make, make a comment, the reason we're going this route is, as you know, final engineering is very expensive. And what we've done is we provided the city engineer with the preliminary calculations, preliminary engineering, and we have to be 100% compliant with all city requirements and counterrequirements with our final engineering. So there is no deviation, we have to be completely compliant.
I understand that, sir. My concern is, I've seen this property under about six feet of water about four times in my life.
Yep.
And I can't, I can't justify building anything there.
Now, in addition to that, I do understand your concerns and also the neighbors' concerns at the plan commission meeting, and we are very sensitive to the stormwater and floodplain requirements in this area. Therefore, as verified by the city engineer, we not only meet, but we exceed the requirements. We are above the 500-year floodplain level on the site entirely. The access is above the 500-year floodplain, and we've, and as indicated, we've already, the detention has already been constructed on the site. We far exceed all requirements on the, on the property regarding floodplanes, floodplain and stormwater detention. In addition to that, please do recall that this property has been modified over, you know, because remember, when the first developer came in, they did a lot of changes, raised that, the bridges extremely high that attach to the property, and we fulfill all requirements at this time.
I know we, staff is absolutely concurred with Mr. Fay's perspective about our major concern about floodplain. If you're correct, the property is surrounded by floodplain. Maybe I perhaps allow Mr. Aiman, who's spent a fair amount of time actually reviewing the floodplain.
Yes, thank you.
We had extensive and healthy discussion at the plan and commission about that.
As Michael indicated, there was a very large concern about not just the property itself, but access to the property itself in the event of a flood. And we, primarily through the efforts of the design engineer, which we reviewed, they looked at the floodplain elevations, and this site is not only above the 100-year floodplain as required by village regulations, but it's well above the 500-year floodplain as well. That access road to the site from the commercial back to the residential is, is completely out of the 500-year floodplain. All the ground that they're proposing to build the homes on is above the 500-year floodplain. And a particular concern of mine was that they're not building any basements out there either, so there won't be any floors below grade that might be subject to flooding from the river or the Norman drain there. I guess my, my conclusion is that, based on the elevations of the site where they're proposing to build homes, and then comparing that to the 105, 100-year floodplanes that we have on the DuPage River there, this property's not going to see a flood from those sources.
I guess one of my questions is, if FEMA has authorized the removal of several residences on the opposite side of the river, as well as downstream here near the Runwick Road Bridge, why are we going to build in essentially the same plane?
I don't know the specifics on the removals of those homes, but I would speculate that they are actually below the 100-year floodplain, which would be grounds for removing them.
That's correct, Steve. They were, they, FEMA changed their accuracy of their plans, and when they did in 2005 or somewhere in that range, they discovered that number of the houses that were removed were actually in the floodplain. And they didn't realize that when they were originally built, because the accuracy was 10 feet contours instead of two-foot contours. So that is indeed the problem. And you're correct, I believe, the 100-year is the design standard, and if you're meeting the 500-year, that's well above. If we tried to do everything to the 500-year or better flood, you couldn't afford to build anything. Illinois is too flat, so you got to have a standard, and 100-year is the official standard by which engineering has to be done. And this exceeds those requirements, as attorney over here has said, and as you've indicated as well.
Another point you just brought up, too, is the fact that FEMA is, or not, is updating their flood maps. And we looked at both the current flood maps from, I think it was 1999 when they were issued, and the preliminary flood maps that have yet to be issued but are available as a preliminary basis. And again, they're above all those elevations on both the old and the new maps.
Go ahead.
No, no, go ahead, no, I was deferring to you.
You know, in regard to the engineering, I'm in full agreement with trustee Fay in regard to floodplanes. I've already seen a couple 500-year floods, and I've only been in the community for 25 years. I can remember one 500-year flood. I was way above the 500-year flood thing, and I had four feet of water in my lower level. And that came in the, that came in the doors on the lake level. You know, oftentimes, there's, I love sayings, and I'm going to give you a saying, you do something right, no one remembers, you do something wrong, no one forgets. And I think about making decisions and saying, yes, this possibly could be a great idea. You think it's right, and it turns out wrong. People show up in this audience continually. I'm a firm believer, I know you folks can't see this particular map very well, this is the, a particular design for the concept plan. This big old dark snake that's moving along the sides of the DuPage River.
Got it up on the screen.
Okay, fine, there it is. The big old snake moving along the right-hand side of the DuPage River, and we know what the DuPage River can do. I think about some of the concerns, there's a development in the Village of Plainfield called the Lakelands. Well, what do they want? They wanted the berm to prevent flooding, and which was, you know, a justifiable reason for those people, it was approved. If we approve this particular project without really good engineering, really great understanding, are we going to be in the future talking about a nice big berm next to that river? I say no. Get it done right the first time, have it planned right the first time. I spoke with Mr. Garrigan today, and he said there is a picture, an aerial view of this particular piece of property, and, you know, it's surrounded by water. It's high, it's high and dry for the moment, and, but it's surrounded by water. Can I truly justify building a site, building a project there that's something that's surrounded by water? Because those people are going to come back. My father lived till he was 95, I got a few more years, I'm hoping I can make his age, but I don't want everybody coming and saying, you did it, you did wrong. I want to do what's right, and I honestly think that we need good engineering and good understanding for this project. I know, Mr. Munson, it is a poor piece of property to try and develop. Now, it's physically almost impossible, but I think we could work together to get something into this area, something that is a little more logical. I look at, I know this is only a concept plan, it's got horrible monotony. I mean, the monotony in this development is outrageous, and is that something that we should approve? And I'm almost saying, no. And there are, there are not a million small items, but there are a large number of small items that need discussion. Your sidewalks, or the lack of sidewalks on the internal streets, narrow streets, all the, all the garages on the front on the street. Is there a possibility, when two cars want to pass, one has to give a yielding, et cetera, et cetera? I think the concept plan needs, not tweaking, an overhaul, an overhaul that, something that can really be acceptable to the Village of Plainfield. Currently, I feel very strongly, this isn't the particular program that I would like to see. Thank you.
I would like, sorry. I, I, first of all, I agree with the comments that trustee Fay made, as well as trustee Rasich, on the flooding and everything, but I'll also comment on the zoning change. Our current comp plan has that, is a different zoning than is, than is available for this. We'd have to change that zoning. We just sat here a couple weeks ago and said no to a larger apartment complex, because that was zoned. Now, obviously, you have to take each one individually, but if that comes to play, maybe, but not with this here. First of all, this is so jammed, as trustee Rasich said. When you read it, I mean, right, right in their own statement, is that they're requesting private streets because of the inability to have the 60-foot right-of-way. It's too much in too small of a space, and it, and it is jammed in. It does, it kind of goes against the guidelines that we all just met on a Saturday and put together, at least it looks that way as far as that's concerned. But I really think the flooding's an issue, I don't want to change the zoning, I want to see what, what else we're going to do with that. If we're making a plan, and this is what we sit down and meet in all these meetings over and over about a comp plan, and yes, it can be changed by a vote, but I, I think there needs to be more of the exception than the rule, and I, I just, I don't support it, so I can stop right there and say I'm not going to vote for the zoning, for starters. Thank you.
This is a very black or white issue. If you look at any municipal training, there's several organizations that do seminars that train elected officials as well as staff, and a strategic plan is a living, breathing document, it's something you change. A comp plan is something a board gets together and agrees on and doesn't change constantly. And those are my comments, last time, I believe a week or so ago, when there was another apartment community brought forward, not another, a apartment community brought forward. Why have a comp plan if we're just going to simply change it every single time, somebody brings something forward? So unless the comp plan gets changed, I'm not voting for this. Thank you.
As chairman of the comp plan committee at the time, we made this mixed use, which does include commercial as well as residential. So what we expressed is, we wanted to find something that would fit in there, and that was one of the things which was possible. As I mentioned, two weeks ago, the other one that we looked at was commercial, already approved for commercial, and there's a lot already supposed to be developed on the corner, and we chose not to change, even though the rest of that corridor is industrial. If that commercial had not been adopted, I guess as the committee would have said, that whole area should be industrial, not necessarily residential, but industrial. So it's, these are discussions that go on at the committee level. I think some judgment of the board is required, you don't have to change just because somebody wants to change it, but if there's logic for it, I think you need to understand why it's the way it is. So, but, don't disagree, it's, I think I'd rather see that as industrial over there, the whole area. The rest of it's industrial anyway. We just didn't get to that point, and, you know, we got the police department next to it, and that's not quite industrial, but it's certainly not residential, so, at least I hope not.
I'm going to make a motion to deny.
Yes.
Trustee Rasich? Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
No.
Motion carries. We're also seeking board consideration to direct the village attorney to draft an ordinance for a special use for a planned development for the townhomes at Prairie Creek.
No, it's deny the whole thing. I think, I think that makes it moot with the denial. It's a moot point, just move on to the witty thing.
Okay.
Thank you for consideration.
Okay, the witty rezoning, we're seeking board consideration to direct the village attorney to draft an ordinance rezoning the southeast and southwest corners of 127th Street and Naperville Plainfield Road to B3 zoning.
So move. Michael, I'm sorry, I need a second.
Second, there's no second.
Michael, can you give us a summary of the plans for this corner?
Yes, as you recall, there was, back in 1994, the overall winehold annexation agreement was approved by a village board, and as part of that village board, village agreement as a part of the annexation agreement, there was a general agreement that upon 30 days upon a request of the owner, the village board would rezone the property that we're discussing this evening. Again, to just refresh your memory, we're talking about the southeastern and southwestern corner of Naperville Plainfield Road and 127th Street, that the board would approve a B3 zoning. The applicant is requesting a B3 zoning, not because he has an end user, the applicant has no immediate plans to do anything with these farmsteads, and I think the board's had, has had discussions about these historical farmsteads before. What they are requesting to do is perhaps to move at least their storage facility of the, as you know, the current applicant has a lawn repair facility on Route 59, just north of 127th Street right now. He's requesting to use one of the barns for storage, and therefore is requesting that this property be rezoned to B3 in accordance with the terms of the approved annexation agreement. So the annexation agreement does outline that the village will rezone this property to B3 upon the applicant's request.
So the current buildings are staying as is, essentially?
That's correct. The applicant is represented, they have no plans to do anything with the current buildings. Currently, the applicant's working on maybe another lease for the farmstead, the house itself, but he has no immediate plans to do anything with the property per se.
Thank you.
And I gather we have no choice but to approve the B3 because it's part of the annexation agreement, so.
Again, there's a, oh, maybe defer Mr. Harvey, but there is a contractual agreement, i.e. the annexation agreement, whereby the village did agree to rezone this property to B3 upon the applicant's request, and we did receive a formal request by the applicant.
Is that the motion that we just made, you moved that we, I seconded that one, so. Yeah.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rasich?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carries. Administrators report?
No report.
Management services report? Engineers report?
No report.
Planning department report?
No report.
Building department report?
I just have the operations report for April, be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Marquez, I don't have a question, I just have a couple comments. Perhaps you could give us some insight into residential building for this next year. I noticed on your report on the 2014, currently, at the end of April, we had 37 building permits, individual home permits. Last year, it was 26 home permits at the same time, which is a 33% increase over this past year. And for the last five years, it's been going up and up and up. And so I got to ask you a particular ques-
And so I gotta ask you a particular question. I know you have good insights into what builders are saying, because you, you see them on a regular occasion. Not only builders, but, you know, tradespeople. Are they optimistic, or are they pessimistic about the housing market?
No, they're very optimistic. I was a contractor during the busiest time in Plainfield, and that same energy that was in the air then is in the air now. It's a, it's a great place to build, it's, as far as permits, fees, lot readiness, everybody's ready to come back to Plainfield.
Do you have a prediction for how many homes?
I do, we have a department bet going on, I'm at one seventy-five, and it tops out at two hundred, so.
Okay, great. You know, one last comment, Mayor Collins, in regard to the Building Department. We took a tour of Kusakowski, Kusakowski last week, and I really have to give our Building Department, our individuals, our staff people there, an awful lot of credit, because they really gave you folks an awful lot of credit, saying, "We got this industry moving, we got it on track," simply because of your diligence, not only yours, Greg, and all of your staff. They sang the praise of you people, and what, not only singing the praise of our Building Department, but also the Village of Plainfield, because what they do is take that information and put it into the total community, the industrial community. Good news spreads like that. Word of mouth is marvelous, and not only from a big, a multi-million dollar corporation like them, giving us praise, and not only you, the work you did with them is contagious. Word of the mouth spreads, and like I say, it'll help the Village of Plainfield. Your department has done a marvelous job, and they are the ones that testify for it.
Thank you very much, have a great staff. Thanks.
Public Works report?
Thank you. First of all, let me give a brief overview of the first three items that we have for consideration tonight. Really pleased that this has come together as part of the strategic planning, as part of the review of the conditions of the roadways, that the board and staff have collectively come up with some direction as far as what needs to be done in the community. We currently have within the budget about a million dollars with the MFT fund to be set aside for roadway work, and sidewalk curb and sidewalk work too as well, as well as a million dollars within the capital fund for roadway work too as well. So you'll see there are two separate programs here, but in essence, they're very similar work. The first item under the MFT street program, and MFT money comes from the state, it goes into an account for the village, but for the village to acquire that money, a resolution has to be passed. So that's a first item that's on the agenda. The second item is the bid that's been let out for the construction under the MFT program. The MFT program includes the resurfacing of several sections of one hundred and thirty-fifth Street, and we all know with this past winter, as brutal as it's been, there are several sections of one hundred and thirty-fifth Street that are really in need of work. This is patching as well as resurfacing. It also includes work to Van Dyke Road just south of one hundred and thirty-fifth Street. This includes the installation of a curb on the east side, and I know the board's well aware and familiar with Van Dyke Road. There is not a curb on the east side of Van Dyke Road south of one hundred and thirty-fifth Street, there's storm sewer in the area, but the storm sewer hasn't been connected, and the curb hasn't been completed, and then the final surface hasn't been installed. That's included within this project. If we go way back several years ago, the adjacent subdivision developer had already contributed funds to complete that project, but we went through a little hiccup in trying to get that finished. We're at the finish line, and that's gonna be completed if approved tonight too as well. And there's a small section of Droughton Road that's under the MFT program. Underneath the street program, which we call the non-MFT program, there's approx, there is a million dollars that's budgeted within this year's budget, and according to the reports from the surveying of the roadways that need, are in the most need, we have areas in the Plainfield Acres subdivision, Urban Street, Union Street, Illinois Street, Oak, Arnold, Chicago, Miles, Eastern, and then also several alleyways that haven't been worked on in over twenty years are going to get attention under this program. Option one in the program was without the alleys, option two added the alleys within if there was any questions between the two. Option two came in well below the engineer's estimate, as you'll see, and I can answer any questions related to that. So the first item related to this is just authorization to utilize the state money that's set aside for the village. Second item is the MFT program, which we received seven bids for. Deconstruction provided the low bid, which was well below the engineer's estimate. And then the second, the third item is the actual street resurfacing project. And just to give a quick overview, the bid provided by Deconstruction is thirty-four percent below the engineer's estimate. And the roadway, non-MFT program, the bid provided by Deconstruction was twenty-two percent below the engineer's estimate, and well below the budget. We did, as everyone's aware, had a little hiccup with Deconstruction related to the bridge project. I think we've overcome that, they did complete the work. It's an award-winning project too as well. D has received other projects through the village, roadway resurfacing and curb and sidewalk work. In those previous projects, the work has been completed on time, and the quality's been very good. D has a very good standing with IDOT as far as bonding, and as far as their capability to do the work. So I'll be happy to answer any questions related to that when we get to it, but Deconstruction was the low bidder for both of the projects after that. So with that, if we wanna do the resolution first, maybe merrily, and then I'll be happy to answer any questions about the projects as we come up to them as well.
Seeking board consideration to authorize the village president to adopt Resolution Number sixteen ninety, a resolution for improvement for, by municipality under the Illinois Highway Code for the twenty-fourteen MFT street improvement program. So move?
Second.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rasich? Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Before we make the motion on the next one, I'd like to ask the mayor a question. You were particularly uncomfortable with what D did on the bridge, are you comfortable with what Mr. Persson's was saying, that you'd welcome him back to doing more projects with us?
That's correct. We had a meeting with the owner and his chief straw boss, if you will, on this project, and we came to the conclusion that it was a give and take on my rain days, his rain days, his days on site, their days on site, and everything else, and actually, as Alan stated, it was an award-winning bridge, and D and the Village of Plainfield all received both awards for it. It's a wonderful project. It, there was just a few hiccups, but yes, I would welcome him back.
That's, just wanna make sure, 'cause you had a lot of personal contact with him.
Yes, I did.
That case, make the motion that we approve D Company or D Construction, the MFT street improvement program?
Second.
I think you should get the amount in there, trustee.
Amount is nine hundred and six.
No.
Six thirty-eight, two eleven ninety-three.
There you go.
Second.
There it is.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rasich? Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
No.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried.
And the next item is just a continuation of the program, and I'd be happy to answer any questions related to that program as well.
Alan, the only thing I commented, and I'm sure Scott's on top of it, is it includes Arnold Street, as, as long as we, that strip between, you know, fifty-nine, I mean, sorry, Oak Street, between fifty-nine and Arnold, we don't know what the future brings as far as what we're doing there at the moment, so, if, if that's in the plans or not in the plans, but to resurface it and then us vacate that roadway, if that's, comes to pass at some point.
Yeah, we'll be happy to touch base with the Planning Department and just see the status, and we can always subtract that section if we believe there's a high likelihood that it will be removed.
Okay, thank you. I'm reading my pack.
I move that we accept the low bid submitted by Deconstruction, an amount of eight hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred and forty-seven dollars and twelve cents to do option two.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rasich? Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
No.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
All right, thank you. The next item that I have is related to one of the goals and objectives of the Building Maintenance Department, and that, since the village actually owns thirteen different generators, just for instance, all the large public buildings that we have, the village hall, the police department, Public Works, the Lake Water Pumping Station, the wastewater plant, all have large generator or generators. The wastewater plant actually has three nine KW generators. And then there are other various smaller generators out there, we have a total of thirteen that are under our responsibility. When the buildings were new and the generators were new, they typically had a five-year guarantee and a maintenance contract that came along with it, and then the contracts were kinda piecemealed depending on who did it last and things of that nature, and we believe that there was a magnitude of savings by bringing the maintenance contracts all under one individual, having that individual responsible for not only the maintenance of the generators, but also to run the generators on a yearly basis under load, which is very important, and it's something that staff does not have the equipment or expertise to do. And it's not just the load of the building, they actually test it with equipment to run it under their own load, and then to go through and test the, and replace oil and other fluids, and do regular maintenance checks of the generators too as well. So we brought these all under the same contract. You can see in the picture here, Eric Miller, one of the operators, is over at the Lake Water Station. This is actually a seven hundred and fifty KW generator at the Lake Water Station, it stands about twelve foot tall, it has a Caterpillar V-12 engine, it is a massive unit, and the three units of the wastewater plant are nine hundred KW for size. They're each valued at about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so you have seven hundred, over, seven hundred thousand dollars worth of generator equipment just at the wastewater plant alone. We did receive three proposals from three of the area contractors who were qualified to work on the pieces of equipment, and the individual providing the low quote for the three-year, we actually received a savings with a three-year contract as versus a one-year contract, was CN Cummings Power at sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy-eight cents. So I'll be happy to answer any questions. We can cancel this contract at any time during the year during the renewal period, so if we're unhappy with the performance after the first year, we can cancel the contract and rebid the contract again. We've worked with this contractor before, they've been very dependable and responsive in the past. So I'll be happy to answer any questions related to that, but staff is seeking support from the board.
When does the existing contract expire?
It really depends on the generator. We have contracts that, well, all of the contracts have expired at this point where they can be canceled at any time, to answer that question, so.
I'm not trying to cancel, I'm just trying to make sure we don't have a gap if something happens.
Yet.
If we approve it tonight, it becomes immediately effective, and you haven't got any outstanding work orders. We saw this three, four weeks ago, I think, but it wasn't bid the same way that it is right now, so now it's, it's good apples and apples, and we can go ahead with it, I just wanna make sure we don't have a gap that may catch us, but.
We are, we're on a month-by-month basis with the other generators, and the one that was before the board before was missing a couple of units, and I, the, the goal was to bring all the units under one contract, and I didn't wanna have a couple stragglers. So it, the goal is to get it all under one contract, it creates the most savings, and then it covers us for the next three years.
It's all there, so it's great, so. I move that we approve the general maintenance agreement with CN Power-Cummins, the amount of sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy-eight cents for a three-year contract.
Second.
Second. The motion has been made and seconded. Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rasich? Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Thank you. And the last item that I have is related to vehicle equipment replacement. We actually have two vehicles, pickup trucks, within the Engineering Department. They're both two thousands, a year two thousand, so they're fourteen years old. One of the units has over eighty-four thousand miles on it, we've had some problems with these trucks just due to their age. One of the benefits to having a vehicle maintenance department is, is that you can, you have your own in-house staff to fix and repair the vehicles. One of the disadvantages is we're good at tracking the amount of cost for the parts, but not necessarily the labor. Most organizations would've gotten rid of these vehicles a long time ago, but they've definitely outlasted their useful life. This is consistent with our discussions at the budget level they have been budgeted for, so there are two vehicles that we would like to replace. Bob Riding, Fleet Services, was the state purchase bidder within Illinois. We had discussions with Rod Baker Ford, they were able to beat that price on both the vehicles, and actually provide a slightly lower price than the state purchase bid. Therefore, staff is recommending the purchase of these vehicles from Rod Baker Ford at a total of seventy-four thousand, ninety-seven dollars and zero cents. I will add that these trucks will also be equipped with snowplows and the snowplow equipment to take care of the winter weather as well, so it's an upgrade from the previous vehicles that we had.
I move that we approve the purchase of two Ford F-250 trucks from Rod Baker for the amount of seventy-four thousand, ninety-seven dollars.
Second. The motion was made and seconded. Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rasich? Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Police, police chiefs report?
Thank you. The first item I have for the agenda is the request to purchase additional computers for our squad cars. In an effort to continue our technology for the officers on patrol, we tried to standardize the computers that they have in the squad cars. What we're looking to do is basically upgrade that technology by purchasing five Panasonic Toughbooks CF-31s, they're model CF-31s. The purpose, the reason we take this model, a couple reasons, it is the latest in technology, and they're also consistent with the docking stations that we currently have in the vehicles, so we won't have to incur any additional costs to change those dock, change those docking stations over. So I am looking for board's consideration for the authorization to purchase five new Panasonic Toughbooks CF-31s for the total amount of twenty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars, and this amount has been budgeted within the current budget year.
That's my motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rasich? Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Thank you. The next item I have is a request to upgrade our emergency operations center and our training room in the basement of the Police Department. When our Police Department was built, or opened actually, in two thousand and five, we had the latest technology available in our emergency operations center, which is used pretty extensively as a training room as well. Well, over the course of the last nine years, we have not done any upgrades to the technology at all. And additionally, when the building was built, the placement of some of the technology, hardware, infrastructure, wasn't really conducive to allow the instructors to get the most efficiency out of the room itself during training classes. Additionally, during the course of some of the major emergencies that we've had in the village, unfortunately, over several years, we have not been able to utilize that room to its full potential as an emergency operations center where we would be able to monitor media coverage, be able to monitor response and mitigation efforts, recovery efforts, for those respective emergencies and disasters we've experienced over the last several years here in the Village of Plainfield. In your package, you'll see several pictures as far as the current setup for the training room slash EOC, and also highlights of some of the technology we're looking to upgrade within that, within that area. And the thing about this And the thing about this, this project is all the monies that would be going into this project will be coming out of our asset forfeiture fund. So I am seeking board consideration to authorize the upgrade of the training room, emergency operations center at a cost not to exceed 49,362.
A couple of questions, chief. You do a lot of regional training, as I recall. I've seen a lot of other police cars come in, so this is, so what are the better facilities around or at least you, you invite a lot of people and they, they do come?
Well, I like to think it's the best facility around. It is one of the larger ones. There are some departments that have larger facilities, but there are also larger departments such as Naperville and, and such. But as far as the size of the room that we have available, we are able to open it up to many more officers through those training regions. As a, as a benefit, some of those classes that we're able to bring in as part of allowing them to use our facility, they allow us free tuition or, or free admission for a number of officers from our department, so we don't have to pay costs for, for that respective class. So there is an added benefit to having the, the latest technology to allow those classes to go on in our department.
This, this room is on the north end of the lower level or is it, is it separate from the one that?
It's, it's the north end of the basement, yes.
Okay. Sure. Second. John, where did you, say the funding was coming from?
It's coming out of our asset forfeiture fund, which is monies collected through drug transactions, seizures, things along those lines.
I think it's a great use of this. This interactive whiteboard is, is interesting technology and it is really a great training tool. I looked into, to this, just, I only have one question, and this is really, you know, me bothering Rick here, but 16 man-hours to move and, what have you got, projector and the screen? That just seemed like.
That, that's the high end of the projection. Up to 16.
That just seemed like a lot of.
And that's only if we deem it necessary based on the placement of the other equipment. If we don't have to move it, it's an optional part of the contract.
Okay, sounds good. That just, that just stuck out to me, that's all. I move we authorize the upgrade to the police department training, EOC, as I done, as detailed in the staff report, not to exceed 49,362.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Trustee Pack?
Yes.
Trustee Rasich? Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. The next item I have on the agenda is seeking consideration to purchase four new WatchGuard digital in-car camera systems for our patrol squad cars. If you recall, back in late 2012, I presented a proposal to the village board where we, over the course of several years phasing it in, we would change our entire in-car camera system from the system we had been utilizing that was outdated. The company was no longer supporting that camera. We could not get replacement parts, things along those lines. And back in 2012, we had a committee come together to research several in-car camera systems and WatchGuard is the one they have, they at that time chose. The system has been exceeding our expectations and over the course of the last couple of years, we have been working to upgrade or basically outfit all our patrol squad cars with the WatchGuard system. This, with this purchase, we will be finalizing that, the last phase of that program. So all our patrol squad cars will be having the WatchGuard system installed in them, which is very good for officer safety, but also allows for interaction with the public if they have a question on a traffic stop or something along those lines. The, basically the, the film tells a story. So I am seeking board consideration and the, these monies would be coming out of our asset forfeiture fund as well. I am seeking board consideration for the purchase of four new WatchGuard digital in-car camera systems in the amount of 20,028.
So move.
Second.
Motion is made and carried.
Let me, question, asset, I think I've asked this before, the asset, asset forfeiture fund like had a hundred thousand dollars. We've got 49,000, maybe another 20 coming out of that. Is it still?
Absolutely. We have several projects going on right now that we're doing research on. Some of them will be coming, forthcoming in the next few meetings. But before we started all these projects, we made sure that we understood exactly how much money we had in the account. And then we got together as a group and put an estimate on how much each of those projects would cost. And based on where we're at so far with all those projects, we're actually coming underestimate with what we've felt was a reasonable amount for the, for these two respective projects tonight, but for the other ones we're moving forward with. So we do have available monies in that account, yes.
Okay, good. The other question has to do with, is this equipment transferable to new cars?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, because sometimes we lose cars.
We do.
Make sure that it moves over.
As long as it's not damaged in some type of process, yes, it is, it is transferable.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Motion was made and seconded.
I'm, yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
Trustee Rasich? Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item I have is a repair bill for our heating and ventilation system as a, in an effort to hopefully finally close out this extreme winter we had. We had several issues with our heating system due to the extreme weather conditions that we experienced this past winter, which required the repair company, the heating, the HVAC company to come out several times over the course of the winter to fix problems that were occurring, where we were losing heat in the building. Over the course of the last several weeks and last several months, we have been negotiating a fee for these services because there was some questions as far as whether this was covered or that was covered. We have been able to negotiate a final fee for the services throughout the winter months. And I am seeking board consideration to authorize the payment of 7,664.33 to Mechanical Incorporated for those repairs. This is money that has been budgeted within the police department budget for these type of contingencies.
I move that we repair the HVAC for the cost of 7,664.33.
Second.
Motion was made and seconded. Trustee Pack?
Yes.
Trustee Rasich?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Before we proceed to, well, you have an operations report.
Actually, I have two items left.
Got one more motion.
Mayor Collins, before we proceed, you know, oftentimes individuals in the public will look at our reports and say, boy, there's an awful lot of expenditures. And there were a lot of expenditures with the police department tonight. The one thing that I have to say is, and I think about it often, you know, we are spending money to improve the police service and that's always important. What, the one thing I always believe in is having a responsive, professional police service. And the only way you can get it is through training, allowing individuals to have good equipment, because I never want to put an individual, one of our police service people, male or female or whoever, into an automobile that's not well-equipped, where the equipment doesn't work, where they're not trained properly. We owe it to our, not only our community, but we owe it to the individuals who are employed in our police service. They, they deserve the best and I, if anyone should complain about it, I don't know what to say other than, I can't say what I want to say, but we have a responsibility and you people are doing a great job. And I, like I say, the equipment belongs in your hands and its expenditures, well received.
Thank you. The next item I have is board consideration to purchase three new squad cars. We are looking to replace three squad cars within our current fleet with three new 20, 2015 Ford intercept, interceptor sedans for the total cost of 76,883. We did go out and get comparative quotes from three different companies around the state of Illinois. These are under state bid. We are recommending that Rod Baker Ford does get the purchase, although they came in a few hundred dollars more expensive. And there's a couple reasons for this. Number one, we would like to keep our business local. But secondly, the company that came in lower bid by a couple hundred dollars is located in far southern Illinois. And with the cost of the gas and the personnel manpower to go down there, pick up the squads and, and come and bring them back, it would actually exceed what the cost going through Rod Baker. So I am seeking board consideration for the purchase of three new 2015 Ford interceptor sedans from Rod Baker Ford for the total amount of 76,883. And this was budgeted in the current budget.
So move?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Trustee Pack?
Yes.
Trustee Rasich?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
No.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Thank you. And the last item I have is the operations report for the police department for April of 2014. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
One question, chief. Year or so ago, we did a study of the red light impact and so on, and accidents reductions and so on. The reason I bring it up now is we're seeing a significant reduction in the revenue from red lights. And I hope that means we also have a sign, really significant reduction in the accidents at those two intersections. And if we haven't done that study recently, updated recently, maybe we could do it a year, whenever the, the next year comes up.
Yes, sir. As you're, as you are correct, last year, those figures were approximately 22% reduction at both locations where we have those traffic lights at 135th and 59 and Renwick and 30. We are seeing our numbers drop, our revenue numbers drop because we are seeing more compliance. I can pull the numbers, though. I'm not prepared tonight to bring those numbers, but I can get those numbers for you as far as what our last year is.
Next, the annual report, if will, would be very effective, because there's a lot of interest in that. And I do hope that people are really paying more attention than they are being safer, which is the objective. We're not trying to make money.
You're absolutely right.
Not objective to money, but we like safety much more.
Thank you.
Attorney's report?
No report this evening, thank you.
Reminders?
On May 20th, there's our next planning commission meeting. The, May 26th, the village offices will be closed for Memorial Day. June 2nd will be our next village board meeting and June 9th will be our next committee of the whole.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Adjourned. Motion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
[laughter][1777.66]